Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Please rise. And Clerk Brown would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for Commander Bauer, who was killed in the line of duty this afternoon. May he rest in peace. Please call the roll.
Trustee Clark?
Present.
Trustee Dravka?
Present and accounted for.
Trustee Hallenbach?
Present.
Trustee Luther?
Present.
Supervisor Wilt?
Here.
Let the record... No, Clerk Flausen attended.
Okay. We're a little frozen today. Thank you very much. All are present and accounted for. And you have in your packets the minutes of the January 9th, 2018 Board of Trustees Meeting. What is your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the Township of Riverside Board of Trustees Meeting for January 9th, 2018.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstain. I wish the President...
Motion is carried. Thank you. Okay. We have also minutes of the special preliminary budget meeting that was held on January 29th. What is your pleasure with those minutes?
I make a motion that we approve the Board of Trustees Special Preliminary Budget Meeting for January 29th, 2018.
One second. Thank you. I have a motion, second, to approve the preliminary, the minutes of the preliminary budget meeting from January 29th. There are no additions or corrections. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Abstain.
I abstain.
I abstain.
Thank you. So we're not here, have us abstained. Thank you very much. All right. Communications.
We have a communication from the senior exercise class to the Riverside Township Fairwill Supervisor and Board of Trustees. The township residents that take advantage of the senior exercise program thoroughly enjoy this class that's offered on Mondays and Wednesdays, and they find the class to be very beneficial, and they'd like it to be continued, and they all sign the...
On Fridays, they'd like to be continued. So...
Oh, I'm Friday.
It's an additional day on Friday.
An additional day of class on Fridays at noon. I apologize. With the same instructor, Jerry Owen. So that's for everybody...
This letter came in after our packets were ready and after the agenda had been established and published. So I told them that we would read it here, but that we would have to consider it when we dealt with budget issues. That would obviously be a consideration. So if you don't mind, we'll defer the discussion of that to another time.
Just one note, if I could, Supervisor Wilt.
Yes.
My mom and dad attended that class for the first time last week. Both of them, on Monday and Wednesday, and they thoroughly enjoyed it. Thoroughly.
You know, that is one of the best programs we do, is the exercise class.
Right. It's very, very popular, and it was in the form almost of a petition asking for an additional day. They all signed it. All right. So we will consider that as we look at our future budget.
We've also received a notice from the PAM YMCA in Berwyn that the Teter Award is going to take place, and their dinner will be on May 11th. I guess they're looking for a sponsorship. Which probably should have went into...
Into, well, it wasn't in the form of the...
It wasn't in the form, but just making it notice that they're having the dinner at the Skylight Banquets West in Berwyn, Illinois, on May 11th. So if anybody would like to see this?
I'll see it. That's what...
Very good. I'm not certain that was PAM YMCA, right? I'm not sure that we...
It's not on our agenda.
I know. I'm also looking to see if we've, if there's any record of having supported them in the past.
I don't think in the past Vera has supported it.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. No other communications?
No. That's it.
Very good. Are there any in advance of our dealing with actual agenda items? Are there any remarks from visitors this time? Yes.
We have a couple remarks. I'm Fran Sidkowitz, Riverside Township Assessor, and I thought I'd just give a report of what's happening at the Assessor's Office. As of now, we've contacted close to 300 seniors to remind them to appeal, I'm sorry, to remind them to renew their senior exemptions, and all of them have been very appreciative to receive that call. The Assessor's Office has extended the deadline to March 7th, so any seniors who missed the original deadline can relax. They have plenty of time to get their senior exemptions in. The Assessor's Office is now taking appeals from Riverside Township, so Riverside Township taxpayers can file appeals now through March 2nd with the Cook County Assessor's Office. We are assisting residents to help them find comparables and figure out the best reason to appeal, answer questions, and make sure they have the appropriate documentation. We will take paper appeals in my office through February 28th, and then I will be taking them downtown shortly after that. We did send out 880 emails to residents who wanted to be notified through email from our office that we are open for appeals right now, and it looks like it might be a good idea for me to see some people who can't make it in during the week. I could probably stay here on February 24th when we have the program and see people before that program. So I'll probably entertain that idea to see if people who can't make it here during the week can...
Oh, that's very nice of you. That would be great.
So I think we'll stay open from noon to 3:00, and then they could come and see the program. So that's what's happening in the Assessor's Office right now.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Then let's move on to new business, and we have a number of grants to consider this evening, and we will take them in the order that are on the agenda and in the packets. I know that there are some people here to speak to some of them. I don't think there's anyone here on this first one. We have a grant request from the Riverside Police Department. This grant is for the repurposing of an existing vehicle to redesign and repurpose it for traffic control, and that would include, it is currently an unmarked car, is my understanding, and it would, this would create the identification like other police vehicles, and it would include a couple of radar devices, and now you have all the details before you. The request is for $7,000, which looks like it's the greater part of the cost of the program, of the redesign and repurpose. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion, we accept this. Just because I have seen so many bad traffic things. You know, in that special budget meeting, I told you that guy turned from the right lane in front of me to make a left-hand turn. I have been on Forest Avenue during the morning school rush, and cars will go over into the opposite lane of traffic and drive down four blocks to get to the light. Today, when I was driving down First Avenue in front of the RV, there was a student walking in the middle of First Avenue with talking on the phone with his head things on it. So I am totally for this, even though it means I'll have to slow down a lot.
And I can tell you that, looking from my office, that this stop sign that's right in front of the building is the most ignored traffic sign in town, I think. I mean, there is, I think it's maybe confusing because there's also a pedestrian stop sign in the middle, but there's a permanent stop sign, and it's like, maybe it's a suggested retail price. Nobody stops there.
I do have a little background on this. The idea is traffic enforcement, obviously, but since they're looking to get the car remade, that's the bigger expense, what it allows them to do is hire an off-duty police officer at a traffic enforcement rate. So instead of paying police officer rates, which are extraordinarily high, they're only here for traffic enforcement, it's like 20 bucks an hour, and what that allows them to do, if they have this marked car, they can then, they can afford to have these off-duty cops. So it's not going to take existing cops off the beat, but it's going to increase, highly increase the visibility of police in town, as well as doing the specific specified traffic enforcement that they're just going to get to.
But wait, in the letter from the chief, on the very last two lines, it says this would not require any new police personnel, so it would just require an ordinary citizen, or I mean, someone they hired.
It would be a Riverside police officer off-duty that they would hire at 20 bucks an hour. So it would be a certified police officer, but the police department would not have to hire someone new or additional to cover any of those expenses.
Pardon me, I failed to note that we don't have a second yet. So we probably shouldn't be discussing this. Okay. We do have a motion and a second to grant this request.
Well, that's, okay, that's very, then, did you read these last two lines? That's very confusing.
Well, I think what he meant is we're not going to have to hire a person to put into the vehicle. It's going to be...
But you, I thought you just said that they were going to hire somebody.
Well, they're going to subcontract out for 20 dollars an hour rather than, I don't even know what to do.
It's probably for off-duty police officers that they could come in and work a shift on this at 20 dollars an hour.
I mean, it doesn't say that anywhere in the grant, but it says that we would then assign and rotate police officers to the specialized units.
Right. It really has absolutely, in my opinion, has no bearing on the grant, though, at all.
Right. Because, I mean, the amount is the amount. Any other discussion?
Well, the bearing to me is that if we give them $7,000 to do this, that there's, somebody's out there, you know, utilizing this car. That's...
Yeah, and he did say that that was going to happen in his request, that they'll be, they're going to rotate people in and out, so...
I was very happy with seeing that they would come back and show us the stops and, you know, what they are doing with that vehicle.
I thought all in all, his proposal was very well done.
Let's call for the vote.
Very good. Then would the clerk please call the roll for the vote on this matter?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dravka?
Yes.
Trustee Hallenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Luther?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
The next grant to be considered is for the Riverside Public Library, $445.81. Very specific amount, and this is also detailed as to what it's for. It's for some, some extra kits similar to kits that have been purchased for them in the past. This would include five kits that focus on the STEAM education.
STEM.
STEM.
Well, they've guided them several times.
Yeah, they did say STEAM. You're right.
You're right.
I think that there's an additional letter that is used in these early education matters, and it's not just STEAMs.
Arts.
Arts. Thank you.
Oh.
Thank you. Got it right for once. All right. Thank you. Is there anyone to speak to this? Nope? All right. Then I will entertain a motion if the board so wishes.
I'll make a motion to approve the grant for $445.81 for the STEAM program at the Riverside Public Library.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Just a technicality. On the second page of the request, where it says that it's filled out and applies to municipalities' fire and police departments and libraries, nothing was filled in there, whereas the police department had filled out that section, so I didn't know if that section is filled out before or after the...
Normally, it is filled out in advance, and I see that they are not asking for it to be paid to a different grantee. They are actually asking that the check be written to the Riverside Public Library, so...
We can't.
You can't do that.
We can't do that, so...
If you approve this, we will make sure that they give us the information. I think that they, their intent was to buy this all online at better prices, and that's why they were asking it that way, and if necessary, sometimes we order it directly for them then.
Yeah, it looks like Amazon and stuff like that on there.
Yes.
Who made the motion, Tim?
I did.
You want to amend it to that we buy it and...
Yeah, we buy it and we...
The township buys it and gives the...
The vendor the check amounts.
Yeah.
So we can amend that.
Okay. So the motion is amended to make, they have the township buy it directly and deliver it to the library rather than paying a check to the library. Any other discussion? Not then, please call for the vote.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dravka?
Yes.
Trustee Hallenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Luther?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Onto the next item, which is Riverside Arts Weekend. Do we have anyone to speak to this one? Just in case there's any questions, so that you're ready for us. This is for the Riverside Arts Weekend that we're all familiar with. The amount requested is $1,400. You have the details of what this would take care of, and it has been customary for the board to support this. What is your pleasure?
I don't have any questions.
Yeah, do you have any, anything you can add on this?
We're hoping the weather will be better this year. But the money doesn't go toward that.
Don't know if we can grant that. Are you Jill?
Jill Mateo, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Thanks, Laura.
Thank you, Jill. Very good. Then do I hear a motion for this grant?
I'll make a motion to approve the grant for the Riverside Arts Weekend in the amount of $1,400.
I'll second.
And I have a second. Motion, second, to support the grant request to the Riverside Arts Weekend. Is there any further discussion?
I do have a point, and maybe it's a larger issue than just the specific grant, but there's a Boy Scout grant in here that continues on it. I'm concerned that if we continue with these grants, year after year after year after year, that it's kind of defeating the purpose. And maybe the board needs to have our own discussion on what parameters we want to put around our grants, but again, it goes from a grant to a subsidy. So if it's been 11 years for RAW and they've been getting it for six years, you know, is it something we want to keep supporting, or do we want to free up money to support new programs? Again, I don't, I don't think it has bearing on this specific grant, but this is one of those that has been going on for a while, so I think maybe we want to set some of those parameters before we entertain more grants.
Well, and again, I would explain that the, the way that the township has budgeted for these things is that we set aside money for programs within the township, and some of those programs are for seniors, and some of those programs are for children, and some of them are arts and education and all kinds of other things, and that those are labeled basically as township programs then. It doesn't say that they're startups, so if we want to change how we support things, that would be a discussion probably during budget discussions, but at this point, I don't know that there's any prohibition on repeatedly granting to the same kinds of activities, and our, our legal counsel has even advised that as long as it fits within certain appropriate programs for a township to support, that we can do that. So that would be a question for how the board wants to go forward.
Right. And I look at Jerry's class, it's not a grant anymore, it's a town program. I'm all in favor of voting in favor of this grant, but I think at some point, we, some of these grants need to change over to town programs.
The difference is that with the exercise class, the township actually does everything from providing the space to promoting it and paying the fees for the instructor. We provide the water. It is a town program. It is different than these, which are established organizations that provide a certain activity within the community or a certain purpose, and there we, these are grants for them to continue that. There, there is a difference. If we want to start creating arts programs, I think we need a whole different kind of staff here. I think we're very fortunate to have organizations where...
I can add up the arts.
Okay.
Dooley noted.
Yeah, I had a, I had a question.
Don't write it.
So Jill, how many people usually come to the, I estimate it, not saying last year, right, of course, because last year was a little bit of an issue?
I don't know why, but they do thousands.
And then how many, how many sponsors, sponsors do you normally get, average?
Riverside TV is going to be mad if I don't come up to the podium. We usually have about seven or eight, what we call corporate sponsors, including township.
And you display our banners and say, hey, you know, welcome to the community type of thing, right? So, you know...
Each sponsor has a banner, at least one banner, and then they're on the posters, they're on our website, they're on all our advertising.
And we can, one year we gave out sunflower seed packets, so they do have a table if we want to leave any information. Correct.
Or the fans.
If you can do milkweed this year, that'd be awesome.
Yes, that would be awesome, to do milkweed, because it attracts butterflies.
Right.
Actually, it might have been milkweed, milkweed seeds that we give, and I still should have some of those, so we wouldn't have to get new ones, but, you know, I'm really for this grant because it does bring so many people to town and that we can show up the town.
And it's for the township residents. That's what our grants are about, is to help our organizations within the township. It helps them thrive, it helps them put a footprint in, in our township. I think some of these grants are fabulous. I mean, you know, Riverside Arts Weekend is one of those.
It's one of the best weekends in town.
It's absolutely one of the best weekends in town, because it attracts thousands of people to showcase our beautiful town.
And just, you know, some of the bands that they have listing, like the Redmonds, they have a huge following.
Oh, yeah. Sure.
No, I don't mean, it's not for against this specific grant. I'm just going to sit down with my accountant, and he's making me put everything in the right order, and so that's kind of where I'm at now, is maybe, you know, put things where they should be. I'm new to the board, so I'm not sure if the grants, if township programs are the right place to put them, but that's just kind of what I'm doing professionally right now, so I think we might want to look at that here, but it has no bearing on my decision to support the grant.
Well, then why don't we?
Do we have a motion already?
And a second.
Yes, we do. So we, acting upon that motion and second, we have a motion to grant $1,400 to the Riverside Arts Weekend, and if you would please call the roll.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dravka?
Yes.
Trustee Hallenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Luther?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming on.
By the way, don't run off if you don't have to. We can take a slight recess after these grants are made. We do have a supersized check if any of you would like a photograph with the board or anything to promote that, you know, your event, too. You're more than welcome to stick around, and we will take care of it.
So let's go on social media.
Yes. Very good. Thank you. Onto the next grant request, and that is from Aging Care Connections.
I would love a large check to take a picture with. That would be great.
Yeah, I would like a big check. A big check.
And this, this is a request for, yes, that's fine.
Yeah, Allison Kielin and Lynn Hossi.
Thank you. And this, there is a request for a $1,500 grant here. First, do I have a motion on this grant before we discuss it?
I'll make a motion that we accept the grant in the amount of $1,500 for Aging Care Connections.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I hear a second to...
I'll second it.
...award this grant? Very good. And now, open to questions, or if you'd like to make any kind of a presentation about it?
Well, perhaps for the new member, you know, it's Tom, not Tim. I think you switched the name tags just to throw us out there. If yours says Tim, it says Tom.
Okay.
I got that.
Thank you.
Very good.
So Aging Month has been around for six years. For four years, it was celebrating Seniors Week, and last year we had some new eyes to take a look at it, and they said, older Americans' month is all of May. Why do we pack it all in a week? Why don't we celebrate for the whole month? And with that, the expansion of Allison and I working on it cooperatively, and Allison will talk about the getting on the calendar and the volunteer nominations, but we have had the support of Riverside Township in the past. We greatly appreciate it. We have two main areas that we look for grants. One is the calendar of events, so over that month, there are over 35 programs, and the programs, and I love it, my heart, my heart just was so warmed when I heard about senior exercise and senior exemptions. There are many older adults, as you know, in Riverside Township, and so the calendar of events is programming that is fun, it's informative, but it's mostly empowering and informational and relevant for older adults to remain in their homes, in their communities, safe and well. And so those programs are geared for that. I did include the calendar, and I believe Vera put that in there from last year, the kind of programs that are included. That's the luncheon, that was, yeah, the calendar of events, and it really is the community that comes together, professionals that love older adults that come and want to be on the calendar. They do not charge to do their presentations, but we just make sure that it's programmed and it's really relevant and empowering to older adults. And then the second piece is the luncheon, which maybe I should have started with, because that's May 1st, that's at La Grange Country Club, and it kicks off the whole month. And at that luncheon, we honor older adults. Anyone six-year-old can be nominated by anyone in the community if they're volunteering and making a difference in the lives of someone. And everyone that is nominated is honored. The committee has, for six years, said if someone is making difference in the community and someone takes the time to nominate them, they will be honored at this luncheon. And it's a great, it's just great. The average age is 75 years old, and we just love that people are volunteering in the community, and we want to honor and recognize that.
Very good.
I believe Ann Kabinski was recognized last year.
Correct.
Last year as doing that. So this $1,500 is going to go to offset the cost of the luncheon?
Traditionally, Riverside Township has, has directed us or felt that that's where the funds would be best used in that piece. As I said, we also have the calendar, and the calendar, there is a cost to laying it out, to printing it, and then to distributing it. We distributed to 26,000 households, and I did include in the information, because Alice is, Alice is on staff with us, and she's in Riverside. Last year, she said, again, the new eyes, what about Riverside Brookfield Landmark? And so she reached out to them, and an additional 3,000 copies of the guide were distributed throughout Riverside and Brookfield also.
So this, the $1,500 would be primarily for the luncheon or the calendar?
The luncheon because of the history and tradition of the township's request.
Okay.
But if you desire to instead put some portion of the money toward the program guide, we're, we're happy to do that. Absolutely.
I would also comment that we've been invited, that if we have senior programs during that period, that we can certainly put them in the calendar, and in fact, I was planning to nominate... And in fact, I was planning to nominate the volunteer who we have working in the food pantry, if, if the board would approve that for the, for the honor, for the volunteer honor.
Fantastic.
Do you know how many seniors from Riverside Township you serve?
Through this program or Aging Care Connections?
Aging Care Connections.
I don't have the statistics. I don't know, but overall, they support eight thousand in their footprint, which to your point goes well beyond Riverside Township, so I don't know what proportion are in Riverside Township. I would be happy to get those statistics through tomorrow.
All right, I make a motion. We approve this fifteen hundred.
There was a motion and a second.
Oh, we, oh, we already did, oh, discussion, okay.
Another question. Traditionally, you've asked for more grants, more funding than this. Is this the only grant application you anticipate for the year, or do you think they'll come back for, for more?
To the township for Aging Care Connections and programs and services?
Yeah.
That I can't speak to the organization itself. This is a program of the organization and has traditionally been submitted separately.
Yeah, I'm all for doing so, the presenter sponsorship.
For example, in 2017, we did make a five thousand dollar contribution to Aging Care Connections, plus a one thousand dollar, I think, for this particular program. So usually we do two grants, very often there's two grants in a given year.
Correct, I think we, I think we can discuss it, so if it, we broke it out.
All right, then we have a motion and a second on the floor. Are there any further questions? Now, Madam Clerk, would you call for the vote?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Looper?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Thank you, ladies.
Thanks for coming on, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next grant request is from Boy Scouts of America, Pathway to Adventure Council. And I see that we have someone approaching the microphone. This grant is for three thousand dollars, and we have a bunch of supporting material about the Boy Scout organization.
What is your pleasure?
Good evening, my name is Manuel Carrera. Thank you for having me tonight here. I have the honor and the privilege to serve the Voyage of Trace District for the Boy Scouts Council, which encompasses of Riverside Town. And I just wanted to share with you a few of the numbers for this previous year. We currently service five units out of Riverside. Three of those are PACs from first grade to fifth grade, two of them are Boy Scout troops, that's from sixth grade all the way to the age of eighteen, and one current Explorer post out of the Police Department, which is a co-ed program for youth that are interested in law enforcement. This past fall, we just recruited over sixty-five new families that joined those programs here in the, in the community of Riverside. Also, for 2017, we had five hundred and thirty community service hours recorded here for the town of Riverside. To put that in terms of cost savings to the taxpayer, that was just over twelve thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. In Eagle Server Project, which is the highest rank you could obtain as a young man in the program, we had just over seven hundred and seventy-three hours recorded here in the local community. Again, just in terms of cost saving to the taxpayer, that's over eighteen thousand dollars. Today, I'm here to request three thousand dollars, there was a typo on the original form. This past year, we did a day camp, a three-day day camp at the Veterans Park, where we had just over eighty families come out and participate. And we are looking to continue to support those program services, training for every registered adult that we have. We also do conduct background checks for every adult that comes through the program. Camping and scouting recruitment resources to continue to grow the program here. The program provides the leadership and character development in scouting, and it's known for throughout the commitment of the community volunteers.
Thank you. Yes.
So, a question on the increase from past years, because I understand that you've received, you know, twenty-five hundred dollars last year, and now you're up to three thousand. So I just didn't know what the increase was for and how, what's the benefit to the increase of five hundred dollars?
Yes, thank you for your question. So, as I mentioned, we had a three-day day camp hosted here in, in Riverside for Veterans Park, and I believe that cost us nine hundred dollars, in addition to the new recruitment, new families, new resources, materials, background checks. Again, we pay for that as an organization. When any new members that join only pay thirty-six dollars annually. We take care of the background check for every single adult.
Okay. I'd like to see like more of a breakdown as to where the three thousand dollars is going to exactly. You know, I know that it's general terms, program, training, summer camp, day camp, I get all that recruitment material, but I'd like to see more of a breakdown as to where exactly the three thousand dollars is going. And second of all, how many in the township? I know that you have, and this, maybe this is the answer, it says one hundred fifty-one Cub Scouts, ninety Boy Scouts, twenty-five Explorers. Are all those in the township?
That is correct.
Very good, thank you, okay.
I have a question. The Boy Scouts are now admitting females to their programs. Do you have any females?
Do I have any females?
In your scouting programs, yeah.
So, great question. So currently, one of the biggest misconceptions is that scouting actually has had females for the past thirty-five years. It's been under the exploring program, which you have next door. You also have it in the varsity team. What's taking place now is this coming fall, appreciate your question, is that we will be taking Cub Scout girls in a program. So, young ladies from the age of first and fifth grade will be able to join the Cub Scout program this coming fall.
So my question is, does this three thousand dollars come back to Riverside PACs, or does it just go to the parent organization and, and La Grange and cover just general expenses? We had a similar group come for us, and there was very specific things that they were going to do for the tribes in Riverside Township. So, is it just going to the parent organization, or is it coming back to the, to the PACs in the township?
Great question. So it goes, it, it is one, one pot in order to provide resources for all of the communities to include Riverside as well. So when we look at materials such as recruitment, these are the items that we need here. So right now, for our next recruitment campaign, we need just about, I believe we were looking at thirty-five hundred new flyers, materials for these units. We're, insurance liability, we have to provide it up to a million dollars for these units to go ensure they're going, taking the trips in the next couple of weeks. So those are the costs and resources that we provide to our local units.
So the, the majority of participants in your organization are outside of the township or inside the township? So if there's, there's, what, three hundred and some odd Riverside Township participants, how many total participants in your organization?
We service just over thirty-two thousand families in the Chicagoland area.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Of the three thousand dollars that if you did get it from us, you, you've talked about insurance, you've talked about, you know, renting the Veterans Park. Do you get more than that three thousand dollars back that comes flowing back to your particular scouting, uh, organization?
From the town of Riverside?
From, from Pathways? I mean, if you have nine hundred dollars in, in a fee for Veterans Park, and you've got insurance that costs you, let's say, two thousand dollars, and you have another rental fee at the scout cabin, that's five hundred dollars, that's over three thousand dollars, do they take care of that for you?
Who's, they serve?
Your path.
The region.
Yeah, so, so.
Or district.
Yeah, so they, yes, they do. So combined, we, we make up, those ends meet, because the scout cabin, as you mentioned as well, there's a rental fee for those as well. So, and we also do another campaign separate from that, where we give some of the families an opportunity to participate in, in what we refer to as Friends of Scouting Campaign, and where they contribute to. Some of the families that are less fortunate as well, may not be able to attend some of the trainings for some of the adults as well. So it's, it, everyone pulls together.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions?
I'll, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we approve the three thousand dollar grant with the stipulation that we get a breakdown as to where the three thousand, the itemized detail as to where the three thousand dollars is going to go, this to there, that to there, this to there, total three thousand dollars. So if you can provide that within the next day, two days, whatever, you know, I'll, I'll make the motion to prove it, given that we receive the, the itemized details.
My question.
That motion, is there a second to that motion?
Well, our other option is to get the, where the money's going to go and then make the grant. We could do that at our March meeting as an exception.
We can do that, too.
And that would still give them time, you know, before the summer.
That's your, I made the motion, there's no second to that.
I, yeah, it fails for lack of a second. Is there any other motion?
I make a motion, we reconsider this at our March meeting, providing we get the breakdown of where this money's going to go.
I'll second that.
I do have a question about, how long have we been, begun to go with the duration? Stops, the breakdown stops at two thousand twelve. Have we been giving this grant before two thousand twelve?
I believe that in your, behind your warrants, you have scouting.
Does it, Displanes Valley?
Yeah, it's changed its orders.
Right.
So in there, I'm, those show way back to as far back as, yeah, five, three, okay. Right, those go much farther back, you just have to find where the scouting grants would be within that.
It doesn't look like it's been, oh, two thousand seven.
By Pathway to Adventures seventeen, we gave two thousand, wait a minute.
Well, before that, it was Displanes Valley, too.
So we started.
Yeah, but it does say Pathway to Adventures.
Right.
We started in two thousand seven with fifteen hundred, then two thousand through fourteen, and then twenty-five hundred starting sixteen, now it's three thousand and eighteen.
Well, I have a motion and a second on this. Second motion, which would be to defer the decision until March and ask for a greater detail on how these particular funds would be distributed. All right? So we have that motion with a second, and let's call for the vote.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Looper?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. So if you would read, if you would update us with those details before.
Thanks for coming on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next, we have the Hauser Junior High Cougar Advance Program. And there have been, these have taken different forms over the last few years, as I recall, but, we, I'm sorry, we've had other grants for other programs in the last few years, but the Cougar, Cougar Advance has been an ongoing grant. Do we have anyone to speak to this from Hauser? No. What is your pleasure regarding this grant?
I wish there was someone here to speak to this.
Is this a club?
I think that this is similar to what used to be Pride, which followed Dare. I mean, Dare was at the elementary levels, and then Pride used to be under Coach B.
Berlinger, yeah.
Berlinger used to do the Pride program, and I think this is simply a similar kind of more broad-based, Better Choices kind of supportive program. And I believe that this is, would actually be used for the, the trip that students are encouraged to participate in.
Twenty-fifth through to twenty-seventh.
Right.
I wonder how much it is per student, like how many, you know?
Again, the breakdown.
Well, yeah, typically with these programs at Hauser, it has always been that, that students need to raise some funds, otherwise too. And then I know with the old program, when the board made grants, there would be students who would come and report on the, the trip and what they learned and how they learned it and so forth.
Would it be possible for the supervisor to reach out to the Cougar Advance Program and possibly come up with some more details?
Or have him come out and speak?
Or that, and then we can look at this next month, so I would move to table this until our March meeting?
I would suggest there might be a time front on this, because it is April twenty-fifth. Do they need to know while we have the March meeting?
March meeting, yeah.
And this is for scholarships, so I'm sure that it would help students to attend.
I'm all for it. I feel that it's a program that we've supported in the past, all the way back to two thousand twelve. I think if the questions have been raised, they have already been raised. So I'm, I think we should, can vote, I would prefer to just vote on it this time unless there are objections to it.
Well, I currently have a motion, I have not heard a second, correct? To, to defer or to table it until the March meeting. I didn't hear a second.
Is there a motion to, to table this to the?
There is a motion on the floor to table it, but there's no second to it yet.
Can I second, or did I make the motion? I'm sorry.
Trustee Drapka made the motion.
Okay, that's, I'm sorry. I, I will second it.
To defer until March?
Yeah, to defer until March.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to defer until March. All in favor of that motion? We don't need to itemize because we're not spending money. So, all in favor of deferring until March? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion is carried with one objection.
And, and could you, could supervisor, could you get, like, reach out to them and give more details and say, hey, we're looking for a more, you know, in-depth kind of information?
Do we make it clear on the application how important it is to come?
I think so. You've, you've all proved that application with the cover letter that strongly suggests that it helps get them to be here. All righty, onward. Seven is the application for a grant to Suckle Spirit. Do we have someone to speak to that one?
Hi, I'm Howard Masgill, I'm president of Suckle Spirit.
Okay. Would you like to express anything about the grant, or does anybody have any questions?
I just have one question. How are you?
Hi.
That's two questions. You, you are a Riverside resident, right?
I am not, I used to be.
You were, you were.
Yeah, my parents are, I grew up here.
Yeah, right, okay. The thousand dollars that you're asking is for the rental of the high school, am I correct?
That's correct, Riverside Brookfield High School.
And that's for your program that you put on?
Correct.
I make a motion that we approve the grant for a thousand dollars for Suckle Spirit.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to approve the one thousand dollar grant to Suckle Spirit. Is there any discussion?
I'm just looking at this Riverside Brookfield Athletic Building. So is this, is this inside the school, or is this in a building?
It's in the main gymnasium.
It's in the main gymnasium?
Yes.
And when is your?
This year, it'll be March twenty-fourth.
Okay.
How about the snow?
I know, that's what I was looking, because I was thinking of. I know, that's what I was looking, because I was thinking if it was like in May or June. You wouldn't need the snow thing, maybe.
No, they, they charge you up until like April, if the snows are not.
Kind of pay for that salt somehow, I guess. All right, are there any other questions? If not, then would the clerk please call the vote?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Luffer?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Actually, I should, in full disclosure, I should say that I'm a member of Suckle Spirit. So maybe I should have withheld my vote there. Thank you. Onward, the American Cancer Society. Is there anybody here to speak to that grant? And this is for the Relay for Life, again.
Wait, it doesn't say that. It's for Relay for Life. It says it's to use to, for rights to patients to treatment centers, information.
I'm sorry, because the material included a lot of material about Relay for Life.
Good call. That confused me too.
Correct.
I thought, I thought the whole thing was-
And staff picked up on that.
Yeah, I thought it was a silver sponsorship.
That's what I thought too.
So this, I don't know if this is supposed to be two different grants, or?
No, it's, it's just one. I think that the one thousand dollars actually translates to the silver level sponsorship, doesn't it?
But as I said, it's, the grant request isn't, they don't state it's for Relay for Life or for a sponsorship.
Correct.
So-
Trustee Clark is correct.
Yes.
Well, it's part of their mission initiative. That includes rights for patients to treatment centers, free support, information, and access to resources. Free lodging is also possible. But trustee Clark is absolutely right. It does not say that we're sponsoring the Relay for Life, although on their cover letter, it has the Relay for Life.
Yes.
But that could be part of their, um, help us change this big coming American Cancer Society Relay for Life of West Cook County sponsor.
I think they, I think they've combined two things into one.
So this needs to be also postponed until the March meeting, so we can clarify what we're doing here.
So can we just pass the motion?
And this is also, you know, at Lyons Township High School, so we'd need to see how many people from Riverside Township.
That's where, okay, so the way that they do these things is that they don't, they're not in every community. So this community does fall into the Relay for Life that is held in, at Lyons Township, the way their regions are spread out. I think that their, I think if I'm reading correctly, the translation is that it would be a silver sponsorship, and that's why they provided all this other material, but they wanted to show how it impacts people within the community in the grant application. So, I mean, I think it's perhaps a difference without a distinction, so to speak.
Yeah, no, I, I get that, but it does say here, it says, please provide a detailed description of how your organization would allocate the funding. It doesn't go, it doesn't say anything about the Relay for Life. You know what I mean?
If it is a silver sponsorship, then they'll feature our logo, you know, on a lot of things.
All right, so you would want clarification and then brought it up, brought it again in March. Okay.
Well, the Relay for Life here, the, the material says the event's in June anyways, yeah, so.
So that shouldn't be a problem. Then I need a motion to defer this until March?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, we'll call the vote. All in favor of deferring this, this grant decision until March, please signify with aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you. Next item is Best Buddies International.
Hello. Katie Rose, I'm the Development Director at Best Buddies.
I'm David Wise.
Excuse me, Madam Chairman. You're gonna have to speak up a little bit, so get into that mic.
Sorry, I'm Katie.
Oh, we can raise it, okay.
Can you hear me now?
You should be able to raise it. There.
I'm Katie, I'm the Development Director at Best Buddies.
I'm David Wise. I'm a sophomore at the high school. I'm on the Best Buddies exec board for a chapter.
So, do you, does the board have any questions? Have you had a chance to adjust this? Or would you like to give us a little summary of what this is about?
Sure. Yeah, so if you're unfamiliar, Best Buddies is an organization that provides friendships and jobs for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities, and we do have a chapter at Riverside Brookfield High School. And so Dave wanted to share a little bit more just about his experience in our program.
Yeah. Just walk, good evening. And I have been a part of Best Buddies at RB for probably a year and a half now. I didn't start till halfway through my freshman year, because I was still getting settled in high school, the year. But after I started, I progressively, like, got into Best Buddies a lot more through that year. And I got a buddy this year, his name's also David, and so we bonded through that. We bonded through a lot of things, and Best Buddies has taught me so many things, to like, respect each other. And it's the biggest club at RB, and so many people are involved in it, and it's really just changed my life. I know it's kind of cliche, but, because it, it's just taught me so many things. I've really become a way more responsible person because of Best Buddies. We have meetings and I have formed a lot of friendships through it, and it's helped me and a lot of other people make their way throughout the day.
Thank you. I do have a question. What, what's all included in the twenty-five hundred dollar grant request?
Yeah, so since it is going specifically to our Friendship Walk, but it would be supporting Riverside Brookfield High School, you would have signage at the event and on our website, and really all throughout the event. So that would be included, but then it also goes to supporting the chapter. So the, we have program staff that work directly with the chapter to really make sure it follows our guidelines, and there's an online system to, to really set them up for success in continued years, yeah.
Okay, I have one more follow-up, if you could. It says you have seventy-two participants?
Yeah. Yeah, within the club.
Is that seventy-two and the twenty-two, are those unduplicated, or are they?
So it's seventy-two total, yeah.
Okay. And of those seventy-two, do you know how many are Riverside Township residents?
I do not.
I mean, judging David, maybe you can help out, since you're part of this group. I mean, Riverside Township, you know, includes Riverside, Brookfield, a part of Brookfield, the Hollywood section, and, and North Riverside.
Um, I'm pretty sure almost all of them are, because you wouldn't really be able to get involved at RB if you're not in, like, in the township.
Right.
So.
There's gonna be a handful. Aren't you from North Riverside, right?
Yes.
Wise, and Wise, I think, is supervisor, so you're gonna have a handful of-
Sure.
That, that little section, North Riverside, that, you know, so.
Yeah, and same thing with Brookfield, too. You're gonna have a little bit of section.
But by and large, I think that probably the most-
Riverside Township, okay. So it's, it's a sponsorship, right? And we, you're gonna have brochures, and it's a walk?
Yeah, so each year we host our annual Friendship Walk at the Brookfield Zoo. So we have about two thousand people are expected to come out this year to support Best Buddies.
And you mentioned RB is the, the biggest club at RB. Is that seventy-two people?
Um, yeah, so seventy-two people are, like, extremely involved in the, in the club. There's twenty-two actual buddies, people with intellectual disabilities, and then there's peer buddies that are directly parent them, and that, those are the people that really get, are really tight friendship. Then there's also a different level of buddies that just come to the events, and they don't, they're not really, like, directly involved, they don't have as much of a time commitment as the peer buddies do.
What is your pleasure?
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the grant from Best Buddies International for twenty-five hundred dollars.
A motion for twenty-five hundred dollars from trustee Luffer. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have, I have one more question. Is this the first time that this event is gonna be taking place at Brookfield Zoo? Or, I mean, is this new? Because I've never heard of this.
It's the third year that we've had it.
It's the third year, okay.
You've never heard of Best Buddies, or have you never heard of this event?
Of it taking place in our area.
At the zoo, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion by trustee Luffer, seconded by trustee Clark, for a twenty-five hundred dollar grant to Best Buddies International. Any more discussion, more questions? Then would you, would the clerk please call for the vote?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Luffer?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes. Again, well, I will abstain. My son is the state director.
Motion carried. Thank you.
For about a month, he's been in the position. All righty, that concludes the grants. Before we go on, is anybody interested in doing a chat presentation photo?
Hello?
Let's take a small recess, if you don't mind, so we can get the chat in here.
Do you need a motion to go into recess?
All right, move, we're going to recess.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to go into recess, all in favor?
All right.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. We'll take a ten-minute recess. All right, next item on the agenda is the North Riverside Senior Fair. We have traditionally participated in this. What is your pleasure?
Are you asking us if we want to stand behind the table and hand out things? Getting a table, I mean, what are we?
Do you want the township represented, would be the first question, and if so, are any of you available to be there? If not, I certainly, it's only like a two-hour event, and I will see that we are represented there. And the other question would be, do you want any kind of special bling for?
I, I think that we should be there with the table handing out things.
Yeah, I agree. Do we have to pay for something?
Twenty-five dollars.
Yes, yes. There's a forty-five dollar card, table size is all that we need. And we, we now have the tabletop sign, or we have the bigger sign, and we have a way of, of displaying that. And we would have some, some kind of an item to be handed out there. I have to get a better idea of exactly how many people. We did recently put in, in order for those bags, which we got five hundred of this time instead of two fifty. But I know that those kinds of things can fly off the table real fast, so I don't know if I want to give that.
We should have some flashlights, little mag lights left over, and maybe some of those things you use to open a jar.
Open those jars up, the jar, okay.
We should have some of those.
And if not, I would get something very reasonable that would still fit into our budget.
With our name on it.
With our name on it, absolutely, absolutely. Not, not just beads or something.
Right.
No, we'll definitely, because I think we went through fans pretty well, so those are gone, and.
So do you need a motion for this?
I would appreciate that, just to verify that you're willing for us to participate.
I make a motion that we participate in the North Riverside Senior Fair on Thursday, May tenth. And we spend forty-five dollars on a table and then money on giveaways.
Do you have a limit on how much on giveaways?
Do we have the giveaways, a thousand? Is that, maybe that might not be enough.
I'll double check as to what their participation actually is.
There's, and-
I know they get a great crowd.
There's, they're just pretty crowded from the last ones that I've done. And I'm happy to be there to help.
I'll second trustee Clark's motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to participate, pay the registration, and some giveaway items.
So would that be up to a thousand pieces, or up to a thousand dollars?
I said a thousand dollars, but I, I don't know, really, as I said, I don't think that's enough. I think we should, because if we're gonna do a decent giveaway, those can be between fifty cents and a dollar.
Can we see what supervisor Wilt's got in the price closet at the township? And then get back to us next month. I mean, all we have to do really is approve this, that we're gonna have the table, and then we can go over that next month, once we have it.
And then we can also have a piece that would highlight what programs we have, of course.
Right, okay, so the emotion then is amended to participate in Riverside Senior Fair by getting a table and seeing what supervisor Wilt can do for the giveaways, and we'll approve that in March? Is that too long of a motion?
That's fine.
It's a forty-five dollar table.
Yes.
I, I think I said that.
We need to get that in, because they do, they do so.
I second it now. Mike, you wanna read, are you seconding the amended?
Yes, I will second the amended version of trustee Clark's motion.
Very good. So we have a motion to reserve a forty-five dollar table and then investigate and vote in March as to what we can give away, most economically, but something memorable within seniors. Any discussion? Then?
Real quick, and it's not specifically to this, but with these sponsorships that we're doing, like the aging wall, if, I mean, we're gonna staff this table, should we be putting together a schedule of events that we're, like, the, the Best Buddies event at Brookfield Zoo? And we should have a presence at these, I think. And between the five of us, I think we could divvy it up to where, if we're putting money towards a sponsorship, some, one of us should show up with a button and, you know.
Sure. All right, I will put together a calendar for you.
That'd be great.
May be a busy month.
Kind of like a signup genius.
Always a busy month.
Do you know the signup genius?
I don't know how anybody did this without showing up.
But I think it's a good idea. I mean, an Excel calendar for a good signup.
I'll have my, yeah.
Well, that's what, um.
It's all online.
I, we still have two visitors here.
Yes, I know, I want to get through.
And I'm wondering if we can adjust our agenda so we can, uh.
Sure.
Get them, yes.
Get them.
If the board so wishes, would you like to?
Wait, do we?
We need a pick a vote.
Right, we have, we have a vote on, a motion on the floor here for the senior fair. So would you call the vote, please?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Luffer?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you for reeling us in. Okay.
So do I have a motion to bring our agenda up, move things up, so that those who are here to speak to us can, can have some of their evening left?
So moved.
A motion to move up unfinished business item A and B to this point in the agenda, and then return to the agenda later.
Allison, are you still here for this E, the aging?
I'm E, B, and unfinished business, uh, B.
Okay.
We can do, are you here for the, the building?
She's here for the town building.
The building needs.
All right, so can we take E? Pardon? Do you have time? All right. I don't want to keep you if you don't, because you're already too.
Because you're here too for the alcohol.
All right, well then, let's move down to item A of unfinished business.
Wait, do we have a?
Yes, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? To adjust the agenda?
I'll second it.
Very good. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Motion is carried, and thank you, Mr. Waters. We had a proposal from your organization for an analysis of the town hall needs, and I think our trustees had some questions for you and wanted to know more about the scope of your work.
Okay, great. I just want to thank you for having us here, and Chairman Wilt- And chairman Wilt for, supervisor Wilt for meeting with us and allowing us to make a proposal to you. My name is Barnaby Waters, I'm with Brush Architects. We specialize in preservation, restoration, and forensic, forensic investigation of existing buildings. And we, we put together this proposal for you to make a comprehensive assessment of the township hall building, so that you could make future decisions on what the needs were and what the priorities were moving forward. So we imagine you must have some questions about the proposals, proposal, and we'll be glad to answer any of those.
I don't think you have another copy, this would've been in last month's.
Yeah, this was in last, yeah, you can take it, Mike.
Yeah, I can look at this.
I have an extra copy as well. And I brought some other material on our firm, if I could hand it out now?
Sure.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Take it over.
Sorry.
We just had three copies, so if you don't mind, we can, that's fine.
This is background on our firm.
Thank you.
I think I have this here, this is...
Thank you.
Okay, who wants to start? I'll start. So the estimate was for twenty thousand, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And that was just, well, it looks to me like it's just all kinda like inspection, correct?
Actually, no, that, that total includes a physical hands-on assessment, mortar, not mortar testing, and, and a report. So it's investigating, it's the time investigating, and it's also the actual report writing and documentation.
So, for example, in the investigation part, will you be able to tell us how many more years we have left on the roof?
I think we could go, maybe not to the year, but we could tell you if there are endemic failures or particular problems with the roof, either that will fail soon or that are failing now. And we could certainly make, we could, we could give you a sense of what the condition is. If we see it starting to fail, we might, you know, we might say, well, it looks like it has another five to ten years. We're not actually sure what the roof, what material the roof is yet, so... But yes, we could, we could give you some sense of, of that.
Like boilers, stuff like that, are we, the wood?
No, this is just the building exterior.
Just the building exterior?
Yeah, that's right, yes. The masonry, roofing, and Mary, feel free to pipe in here.
If I could add, I'm Mary Brush of Brush Architects. And where we specialize in preservation and existing buildings is addressing your concern, but it's, it's saying, going through your historic data on the building of if the roof is original, which we don't believe it is, you could probably have had something done since the building was first constructed. It's looking at it, talking to the building maintenance, saying where the leaks happening, is it a maintenance issue? Or has the roof achieved its anticipated lifespan? Today, even as walking in, we can look at the snow patterns. And by looking at the snow patterns, we can tell where the hot spots are, whether perhaps it might make sense to add additional snow guards, so you don't have big avalanches of snow coming off. Cause even that technology has changed. If the snow guards were sufficient, we would see patterns in your snow on the roof that would, that would support that they were working properly. And so it's taking those items into account, it's going all the way down to how old the windows are, if they're original, if they, if it makes more sense to restore them at this point, if, what the landmark covenants are on the building, what our options are, whether storm windows are appropriate, interior storm windows. And all the way down to the mortar, which on our existing property project that we have with you, it's been a huge discussion in the office of the red mortar and the beating of the mortar. And Barnaby, as he's worked on the addition area, he's found areas that are of your building exterior, but now they're enclosed within the interior of the building, they're in the back stairwells, which would be a way to take a small sample about that big in three little areas and identify the material makeup of that mortar, to then be able to take it to your landmark commission, which is probably quite strict, strict with the, the depth of historic value within your community. And be able to say, from our scientific analysis, this is what we recommend the mortar to be, why it would be red, looking at your historic photos, seeing if there's a contrast, cause there's other areas of the building that don't have red mortar. So it's, it's establishing that whole framework.
Base, the baseline.
So moving forward, as you make decisions, this, this is, this is what your historic fabric is. As you choose to move ahead, looking back at this, this is how you can continue to make decisions.
So for the twenty thousand dollars, what is the deliverable? I mean, is it the facade investigation, the historical research? What are we getting out of there? From the original, it looked like there wasn't even a scope of work included?
Uh, no, we have the, the scope.
Scope of work goes, you do get a paper deliverable.
Yeah.
So that's your product. What you get out of it, you get us physically on your building, carried by masons, who, who will lift us up on the building, will get a, will get an access of the roof, will sample your roof. Our concern is that your roof shingles may be asbestos fiber shingles. We take a little piece off, which doesn't cause a leak, they put in temporary. But then we establish once and for all what that material is. It may not be, but hopefully it's not. If it is, we can then say, this, moving forward, this would be how we address your roof. We also take samples, the mortar testing, we, we have a budgetary number in there, don't we?
Uh, I believe we, I'm not sure.
But we would like to resolve your mortar issue, cause it's different on your stone than it is on your brick. So, and probably your windows are painted with lead. That's actually not as intimidating as, as other items, and it's very standard to remediate that.
So...
Would the mortar be the FAGA inspection?
The more...
The, the, this would be down here, the, uh... Oh, where do we have it? They actually, we labor and equipment for contractor inspection, so we don't actually have a number in there for mortar testing yet. But...
We turned this around and we just didn't get our call back, but usually it's, for them to be on site and take their three samples is, is ranges. Under twenty-five hundred, we could get a specific number for you for that. Usually scientifically, they wanna take three, so they can see where the...
Under twenty-five hundred for all three, or twenty, under twenty-five hundred for each inspection?
Or all, all three. They come once and they take three samples.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and then we didn't actually know to what extent, um...
He wanted us to go.
For the, for the lift to inspect the, inspect the roof or, or the masonry. So we didn't actually put a solid number in there yet, so that's something that would be added on to the cost. But to further what Mary was saying, the deliverable is, will act as a roadmap and a tool, so that you can make really solid decisions on the building moving forward. And, and, and so you'll have a snapshot and assessment of really where things stand. And based on our experience, we could, we could give you a, a, a solid assessment of the building with photo documentation. Also, I believe in the cost, we have, we have caught, we have opinion of cost there. So we worked with restoration, preservation contractors to give you some numbers on roofing and, and masonry work for the, you know, for real preservation, restoration. So that's included in there too. So this you'd be able to, to budget with and act, and it would be a roadmap for you moving forward. The other thing is that right now, we know the village is thinking about, you know, their, their facility assessment needs. And so there might be some changes in the building, in the fire station. And so this could work in conjunction with that to help you make decisions in that area as well. So...
So would it include, it would include roof, five to ten years, estimated three million dollar replacement, as, asbestos removal, it would include more than just you have problems with your board?
It gives you something useful to work with.
And then, once that's done and accepted, would you then act as the general?
We would love to be the architects, leading the, the restoration. And then we could still carry you through public bidding and work as the architect through construction services.
Correct.
And you'd have competitive bidding out for, for each of it, but also we could help you phase the project based on your budgetary needs. And so it wouldn't all happen in one, you know, necessarily happen in one year. We could phase the work over time, so that you can make it happen.
So if your roof ends up being your highest need, which may be, it, it may become a need based on talking to people who do the maintenance or who just are constantly complaining about that one corner that never gets addressed. Of also, and looking at it with the big snowstorms currently underway of, it becomes a life safety issue of a snow collapse. What do we have to do? Happily, when we walked up, we did not see a lot of big icicles, which is becoming a bigger and bigger problem nearly everywhere else, but we didn't see icicles, which is fantastic. So it may be, what are our options? If, can we retroactively just put in the snow guards you need if your roof is otherwise fine? Should we just do it all once and for all? And it will, we'll come up with as many different options as are available. And in keeping with the historic character of the building.
So what advantage would we have hiring you as compared to just putting out RFPs and getting bids directly from contractors?
A responsible contractor would say you need to provide a schedule of, of scope of work, so that they can provide apples to apples numbers. One roofing contractor will say you have to do a hundred percent, and another one will say, no, you just have to do Band-Aids. We will set it up with a full big table, that they have to respond in the form, so that then if you get three respondents or twenty respondents, you can look at both what their actual answers are, if we have unit costs, where that could change things, and also just compare their hourly wages of what are you really getting and where are they seeing a potential gap or opportunity?
Plus, we would, we would provide construction documents and drawings and specifications based on historic preservation standards. So this is not something that contractors, you know, are expert on, and so we, we'd have documents which will, will provide the guidance to the contractors, so...
That's not included in the twenty thousand?
No, because we don't know to what you want us to design at this point.
Or what the, or what the needs are, yet.
So this twenty thousand would get us to a point where we would then further determine this is a project that we need to go forward with, and then we would have a bid, we would have a, a quote for what your service for that project would be.
That's correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Cause we can't, it, it, it wouldn't be fair to you or to us if we said your construction documents will cost five thousand dollars. Because we don't know if it's, it's a masonry issue, we don't know if it's a roofing issue. We do break down our, our, when we get into design and construction, it's also broken down based on what the, what the needs are, because we will end up giving you ten different options. You'll have to have your meetings of they're saying do this, and do that, and do the following things over the next ten years. What do we wanna do and what are our capital funds are? You could say, look, you're not saying anything is, is a problem right now, we're not gonna do anything for two years. And, or you could say, it's a windfall, it's a problem, do the roof right now, but we're not gonna do anything with the masonry at this point. But if you have other capital finances, if the access to get to the roof also provides all the access that a mason would need. So it, there are benefits to lumping it all together if your capital finances allow, because then your mortar and your brickwork gets replaced and your windows get painted all with the same access, rather than building up the wall and then taking it down and bringing it back two years later. So we'll be able to discuss strategies with you, once we figure out what the issues are for the building.
I, I have a question. How did you get the contract from the Village Riverside to perform your work?
Oh, how did we? Well, we, we were introduced to, to Vera via Ed Bailey at the village.
But how did, how did you get in with the village?
The Village Riverside, yeah. How did, how did the Village Riverside decide?
Uh, this was through, um, uh... This was an acquaintance, I think this was an acquaintance of mine who lives in part of Riverside or Lyons, or I think he lives, and he introduced me to Ed Bailey.
Gotcha. And then the village approved you going forward with whatever they're doing?
Well, actually, with my previous firm, I did an assessment report of the water tower. And so I went up in a lift, examined the whole interior, tried to determine what was causing, like the paint peeling and the roof. I went up on the roof, I did a thorough assessment, and I think we did a, an opinion of cost on that, so that the village could decide, do we wanna do the roof, or we wanna do something with the masonry? And then, and then they decided to go with a, they wanted to look at all their buildings, and so that was put on hold. But that's how it started, and based on that report, Ed recommend, Ed, Ed wanted, wanted us to do the village hall. And then as a part of that, said, why don't we have a conversation with, with Ms. Wilt? And, and at least start the conversation.
How long ago was it that you inspected the water tower?
That was about two years ago.
And could you tell us more about your background?
Uh, my background?
Yeah.
Um, I, I'm an architectural designer. I used to work with Thornton Tommasetti, a structural engineering firm in Chicago. I've done a lot of forensic investigations, building enclosure, repair and restoration, and also new construction, building enclosure design. And that's, that's basically my, my experience. And Mary, of course, has many years of preservation, restoration experience on numerous projects throughout the Midwest.
I did, when I question you, on page five, it says, we prefer the contractor contract directly with the Village of Riverside. I think that should be Riverside Township.
Oh, I think that's true.
Cause we're two, we're two separate entities.
Yes, that's right. That's my mistake. I'm sorry.
So what are your fee structures then? Most, most architects won't get a piece of the contractor's business. Am I not necessarily comfortable with that? Cause I feel that the loyalties are divided?
We actually, we don't work that way. We, we have a set, it's, it's, it's supposed to be that the owner is at the top of the triangle that never gets closed, and they have a relationship with the contractor, and then they have a relationship with the architect, and these two never close the contract. For the inspection, we have a fixed fee for that, with kind of a menu item of whether we go mortar testing and other options. But we need a contractor on our side to physically carry us and lift us and keep us safe and alive during the inspection. So that part, we can bring the contractor in on, under us, or they can contract directly with you. We prefer that it's directly with the township, as do they, cause then it's a direct fee schedule rather than through us. But we can do either one of those. Then with that set fee, then we would create, once there's a scope of work of how you wanna proceed, either in one-year increments or in five-year increments, we would be able to set a set fee to the design. And there would be, cause we can quantify that. Then, once we get into bidding and landmark negotiations, getting through the commission approvals, through construction services, where typically we're on site for... where typically we're on site for progress meetings, either one week or two, every two weeks, depending on the intensity of the work at any moment. That runs hourly so that then you get exactly, we can show up and you know we're here. And if nothing's happening for a month through, to a snowstorm, we're not billing because we're not active. In new constructions, then often it is a fee base that the architect is 10 to 12% of the construction. For restoration, it, it, so much of our work happens independent of the contractor that it, in my entire professional career, we've never done a percentage of the construction cost.
Are we supposed to be voting on this tonight or just discussing it?
I think that we were so overwhelmed getting it the day before last time. Um, we really had no time to digest it and everybody had some questions. I'm not prepared to ask for the question. I didn't plan to ask for the question because I thought that this conversation might open up some, actually some other pricing aspects of it. If there were, if there was more that the board wanted or less or whatever, that there might be some negotiation on that. I, I'm just, I was not, um, asking for the approval tonight. If you, so choose, I mean, it's on the agenda about, um, but I think that we really just wanted more information.
I think we need to digest this and maybe talk about it at the budget meeting.
I do think it's something that we should look at though.
Oh, right. Oh, absolutely.
And maybe put it out for next month to see if we want, if we're willing to do it or not. Cause we do have money in the budget for this year.
Yeah, that's good. And so we can discuss it at the budget meeting and then put it on the agenda for next month.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, we're just here to answer any questions and hopefully we can, uh, we'd love to work with you on this gem of a building. And, cause we see the value in it and we, we're, we're, we're excited about the possibility of working with you on it.
Well, we thank you for coming tonight and for, for sitting here through all of the grant discussions as well, so.
To understand the building, we have to understand the good work that's inside.
That's a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we finished item A under unfinished business.
Do you want to go to B?
Or we want to go back to lines?
Yeah, question is, um.
Didn't we make a motion to go to B?
I thought we were going to unfinished business and, yeah, we were going to, um.
I thought we were going to go to B.
Yes, go to B, the approval of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Thanks, good, good evening. All right, so. You have an ordinance in your packet and this very simply stated, just references the rules that we, we can put together, whatever. But this is kind of the first step. We need to approve an ordinance that says we would allow the use of alcohol in the building for, um, you know, on application and compliant with the rules that would be set forth. Uh, it would require a dram shop and it would also, I've investigated a little further as to how it would be different for a public event for which there would be a fee as opposed to private events like a shower or a birthday party or whatever, where there might be incidental alcohol served but not sold. And so the Village would not require any kind of a permit for the private event. However, we would still want to cover our liability by requiring the users to, uh, show us as an additional insured on a policy. Now, since they're not getting a license for that service, I've investigated further and what is possible uh, is that somebody can use, utilize or contact their homeowner's insurance and get an endorsement for a specific date and time off the premises of their home, like for a private party, like we've described, a shower, you know, wedding, whatever. And, um, they could pay for the township to be an additional insured on that. And that would, it would cost the parties seeking such a thing, at least with a major insurance company that I deal with, it would be like a $50 fee.
Okay, um, that sounds good. Now, when, um, you're saying selling alcohol beverages, so say like the Junior Women's Club has a party and they want to sell glasses of wine or beer or something, they could actually bring it in and charge money?
Yes, but for that, they would have to have the, the Village, um, issue a license for that event. And, uh, they would have to comply with the Village's rules on that.
Okay, I think, um, then we should have some type of policy and it might not necessarily need to be in the ordinance, but where they show us that they have the license and the insurance.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
The, the steps that they would go through, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, point of clarification.
Okay.
Um, if we wanted to, say someone wanted to have a puzzle exchange, everyone brings their puzzles, exchange their puzzles and they want us to line up a corner, that's the $50 homeowner additional insured route?
All right, so there's the other thing. Um, most insurance companies will not extend that insurance for a nonprofit, for a third party. So they will, they will give the endorsement covering an additional insured like us as the host building. But a homeowner cannot say, I'm a member of the ABC club and the ABC club wants to have an event there and I will just extend my homeowner's insurance to it. That's not going to fly.
So they would have to get the dram, dram insurance?
So they would, a, a nonprofit would have to get, um, an appropriate coverage for it. We would have to demand that they have coverage because no matter who is here, somebody's going to have to show that we're an additional insured. Cause if somebody drinks too much and falls down the stairs, we don't want to be liable for it. So we would need to have that insurance, but organizations would have to understand that they're going to have to go out and probably pay for that. It might be $200. It would have to be worth their while. But an individual that wants to have a private party here, doesn't want to have it all in their house and would like to, you know, have more people that will fit into their house, they could do that and extend it as long as it was not open to the public.
All right, then I make a move that we accept the ordinance to authorize the sale and serving of alcoholic beverages in the Riverside Township Hall.
I second.
The motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Drapka to approve the ordinance, um, which would be, I think it's 2018 dash, it may be two, but we'll have to find the number. I think it is number two. Um, authorizing the sale and serving of alcoholic beverages in the Riverside Township Hall. Any discussion? Hearing none? Would you please call the vote?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hallenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Loufer?
Yes.
Supervisor Will?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Now, uh, on a follow-up to that.
Yes.
So, uh, revisions on room rental?
I've been working on budget, so that kind of took the back burner.
Sure, sure, sure.
Um, but any input you have, anything that you think would be appropriate fees and such? You know, it's basically, we're pulling it out of the air right now. We're trying to figure out what our costs might be to, because I think at least at the beginning, we need to have somebody on, on, um, on site for these events.
Yeah.
And whether that would be supervisor or a staff member or a gent or, we'd have to figure that out.
Or a trustee.
Or a trustee.
Trustee, isn't there a deputy thing? Yeah, in the township code. Start deputizing people.
Well, issue one bullet that you put in your pocket?
Hey, township code said.
Right, that's right.
Oh, we could be deputies? That'd be cool. Go wear the badge?
Well, I.
Next you're going to want uniforms. Let's not.
I just, I, I just, you know, I think it's important to have a policy revised, you know, because I think, you know what I mean?
Here again, I don't anticipate us actually doing this, having any events until the new budget. So I'm thinking April 1st would be the earliest we would approve such a thing. But because of the process of possibly having to get a license, I mean, I, I would like, I hope to have something together because I think it's a consideration for the budget. So we have a meeting a week from Thursday and at that point I will have a suggested schedule of fees so that we can see what kind of income there might be to offset any expenses we might have so that we can consider that part of the budget.
So if this doesn't work out, we could always rescind this amendment. Is that correct?
Well, this is still, and so this, we still should be approving each event, but this ordinance now allows us to do that. So we won't have to every time decide, yes, alcohol can or cannot be served. It would be more of a matter of we approve this event because yes, it is within the limits of the space and fire code and that kind of thing. And, um, that, that was what, um, Mr. Kelly advised when he drafted this for me.
Um, the other thing is, is that I, I think it'd be helpful as we walk down this path here to, uh, get in contact with the Village. How long does it take to get a liquor license?
And I, okay, and I did that. I had the conversation with them. They expedite these things. There is not a situation, I was concerned because I've dealt with nonprofits in Brookfield and for example, in the summer in Brookfield, you have to have requested a specific amendment to a license at least two months in advance because they need a cycle of two meetings. Riverside doesn't require that.
Okay.
They allow the president to make that determination as the liquor commissioner and staff expedites those things. So we're talking weeks, not months.
Yeah.
And sometimes days.
I think there's a question from the audience?
Yes.
If you were interested, I could explain what I went through to get a valid license for a juniors event. If that's of interest to you.
Sure.
Um, either right now or separate, you know, outside the meeting if someone had a question.
No, but I mean, that would be helpful, I think, to the board.
For the, was it at St. Mary's or, um, where was it?
Um, the last one I did was for the train station.
Okay.
Is that of interest?
Sure.
Yeah.
Just like a minute.
Hi, again, Allison Scanlon. This time I'm representing Riverside Juniors and I'm a Riverside resident. Um, so the process that the Village has is that they have a very detailed special event packet that you fill out, including what your event, uh, is going to be. I haven't looked at it in a while, so a bit fuzzy in the details. You have to include a site plan. You have to include whether or not you require any additional village services, if you're going to be blocking streets, et cetera, et cetera. So very detailed information about what you're planning to do, um, for the actual inside of the building. The last one I did was for the train station to indicate which, which doors we, um, plan to keep open. Then, uh, Village staff reviews that and each of the village department heads signed off on our particular request. Uh, we did have an amendment by the, uh, fire chief who recommended, um, additional doors needed to stay open during the event. And so we amended our plan for that. And then as supervisor Will indicated, then the liquor license, um, actual license then goes to the Village president. The president sells to sign off on that. And the process was very rapid. They took it up at their, like, their next staff meeting after I submitted it and discussed it. Um, and then it went to all the, the department heads for sign off. So that's, I'm only speaking from my personal experience for that particular application I did and not, you know, for any, anyone else's experience.
Thank you.
All right.
And, and I will add to that, that having spoken with the Village manager and the, uh, the clerk, they also indicated that that, that it's a little bit more complex a process when it's an event like that, just as, as you indicated. That was an actual event per se.
Sure.
And because it was a building that the Village manages as opposed to the township would have those concerns instead. So that's where we would have those kinds of decisions to make. Yes, it's, it's appropriate to let them use the kitchen or whatever. And they, uh, the, the Village is very amenable to the use.
Okay, good.
Very good. So we have approved the, the ordinance. Thank you very much for your input.
And I think Allison is here too for the Aging Well Month.
Yes.
Okay, can we go to that?
Let's double that.
Can we go to that?
So, um, tell us, yes, um, on the Aging Well Month.
I, uh, you're going to do that next?
Why don't we, why don't we just go to that?
Finish it up.
Okay, I'm representing Aging Care Connections. So as Linda Hussey mentioned before, during the, uh, month of May, Older Americans' Month, um, Aging Care Connections in, in cooperation with several other agencies has a volunteer group of people who come together to plan Aging Well Month. There are two components to that month and I'm here today to speak to you about it, to see if you're interested in sponsoring. And when I talk about sponsoring, not money wise, but you know, sponsoring programs. And also using your forum, um, uh, through the Cable Commission to speak to anyone out in the community who's, well, listening in on the meeting today or in one of the repeats of the program. So the two parts of Aging Well Month, the first are health and wellness programs. So we collect, as Linda said, anyone out in the community in our footprint who is, um, already planning to, to have some kind of fun, free and informative event during the month of May. We will include that information on our program calendar. We also have many entities, agencies, businesses, for-profits, nonprofits, who specifically plan an event so they can get it on the calendar and they host it during that month of May, Older Americans' Month. So I'm coming to you as the township board to just offer it up to you. If you were interested in planning an event, you know, maybe a, a special, um, one of your weekly exercise programs is something. Maybe you want to put one of those on the calendar. But again, it would have to be, um, fun, free and informative. And so that might not go with your exercise program because I think you do have a charge.
No, we don't, no, we don't.
Okay, it's fine, okay.
That's why it's a hobby.
So maybe you want to put something like that on the calendar. Maybe there's something else that you, um, that one of the, uh, one of the board members has a specific expertise in and you wanted to host a program like that. You know, maybe there's something else you want to host for older adults in the area. So if you had an idea for a program and you wanted to get on the calendar with again, uh, the distribution of over 26,000 households, not just in Riverside Township, but Riverside and Lyons Township and a little bit of Proviso, you know, we'd be more than happy to put that. There's no charge to you to be on that calendar. And, um, I included the form for that too, supervisor Wilt. If you have any ideas for that, we would love to include that on our program calendar. And then the second part of older, uh, of Aging Well Month is that again, we recognize volunteers. So I'm looking for your help to help us to identify these older adults. We call them community gems, which are older adults who are going the extra mile by volunteer work in their community. It could be volunteer with their church, with the school, with a nonprofit, with, with government work. Um, anyone who is giving of their time, we would really like to host them at this luncheon at the La Grange Country Club. So again, if you have, you, you personally have a recommendation for someone you'd like to recognize or you as a board have someone that you'd like to recognize or someone listening in at home has someone they want to recognize, we really would, we really need your help to find these folks so that we can bring them to the luncheon and honor them on that day. And then it's free for the folks who are being honored and it's free for the person who is nominating those older, um, adults, community gems. And that's it. Any questions?
How many times can I get on the calendar?
You can get on the calendar as many times as you want. We had, um, and I think that you have, you have a copy of, of, here's a copy of the program from last year. You could see the different kind of programs. We do try not to, we don't want to repeat the same topics. Um, too many times, maybe there's a couple of times where something is repeated, but we try not to repeat the topics. Last year there were 35 programs. I'm really hoping to get to 50 programs this, this year. So, um, if you have ideas, I would love to put them on there. The more programs, the better, I think, because, um, the footprint is, is pretty large. So people, you know, have, you know, um, if they can't travel too far north, they go to something closer to them. So there's always folks in, in the area who want to travel to these programs.
I was, cause our exercise class currently meets on Mondays and Wednesdays at noon. So could we put that on every Monday and Wednesday?
I think we will put it on one time. That's what we've done for things that are repeats.
Okay.
But you know, if you put it on for your first Monday in the month of May or the first Wednesday, whatever it's on the schedule, then they might come back all the rest of it.
Okay, all right. Very good. And as I indicated earlier, I do plan to nominate the person who's been volunteering in our food pantry on a weekly basis, which has been a very big help. And perhaps if any of you have any other suggestions of folks?
I have a suggestion. What about Wayne, Wayne Dismen? He served the, the.
One about Wayne, Wayne Dismen, he served the, the board for a number of years and he's always been.
Is he still around, Tom?
Yes, he is.
Yes, he is.
He stops in every now and then. He comes to the exercise class sometimes.
Yes, and I, I think that, you know, he was very dedicated to his job as trustee for many years.
You have.
But it has to be a volunteer, right?
Well, someone who's volunteering their time giving back, you know, it's, so someone on this board, someone giving of their time for this board, I'm sure they've been doing other volunteer work in the community. It's just the type of profile of, you know, people who give their time for, for service like this, I think. Yeah, so again, is anyone that you personally, you know, in your own personal life you want to nominate, or someone collectively as a board?
And you all have that, the form in your packets, so.
Any other questions?
I'm good.
Thank you.
I appreciate you giving me this word, thank you so much.
Thanks for staying for most of the meeting.
Putting up with us. All right.
Allison, how's your dad?
He's better, thank you.
Good, good.
He's holding up the mask.
Very good. All right, then let's double back. We still have the approval of budget for the opioid speaker event. And we have a request for, everyone gives $500.
$500, yes.
I make a motion to approve the budget for the opioid epidemic to be held on Saturday, February 24th.
I second it.
Motion and a second to approve $500 budget for the opioid speaker event. And you also have some details of what will be happening there that was handed out earlier this evening. Hope that all of you can be present at it. Any discussion on that budget or the question at hand?
Just, the budget is for two ads in the landmark and some cookies and water.
And you're taking care of the ads?
Yes, they have been placed, so.
All right, we have the motion made and seconded. Madam clerk, would you please call the vote?
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Luthler?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Motion cleared.
So just, you know, I passed out the tentative agenda and who is speaking so far, who is confirmed speaking, the room set up. I've also reached out to RBTV. I emailed Greg Gorski today to see if it could be filmed.
Okay.
On that, and then the other thing that I didn't, we thought during the question and answer session, and this was Tim's idea, that we would pass out note cards and pens. So can we use some Riverside Township pens?
Absolutely.
Okay.
No question.
I'll check and make sure if, do you have note cards or?
We have some note pad, we have the pads if you.
Oh, those pads.
We just had a reorder on them, I mean.
I can pick up a pack in the three.
I mean, I have that too.
I've got tons of them at home, I'm sure, so I can supply those.
Okay, that's what. And if, I am also willing to take suggestions from anybody if.
I will tell you that we have, we've printed the flyers and we've, we've had them on the table out here.
Great.
I have placed it on, I have sent it to the libraries, the village, Village of Riverside, Village of North Riverside, Recreation Department in North Riverside, sent it to the Neighborhood Services Chair in North Riverside. I've placed it personally on my, on my Facebook and I've also shared it with the North Riverside Forum.
Oh, great, okay.
On Facebook. I'm trying to promote it anywhere I can.
Well, I, I think it was, were you at Lions Club today, Vera?
No, I.
Okay, it was supposed, the flyers were supposed to have been passed out at Lions Club today. And I've sent out 50 personal invitations for people and I have a few more to go. And I would appreciate some help putting out the flyers around the village.
Yeah, just get ahold of me for, I'll do any, any where you want. I can do Riverside, I can do Brookfield, I've got.
Okay.
Right, and that's why I did send them to the libraries for copying and posting. So hopefully that will.
And I'll, I'll put it on my Facebook page too.
Very good, I think.
Any other suggestions for?
Riverside Exchange, that kind of stuff, Riverside Moms.
I am not on either of those.
Yeah, I'm not either.
You're not on Riverside Moms and stuff?
I, I gave up social media.
I think I sent all of you, I mean, I think we shared the flyer.
Right.
I printed some off from what Vera sent me and I'm gonna pass them around in the neighborhood.
Oh, great, thank you.
Okay, very good. I think that we've got a winner there, so.
I do too.
Thank you, I think.
And I thank everybody for their help.
Thank you for leading the, the charge on this.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. And then we have the Lions Club Chicken Dinner. We normally take a, a large section of the placemat advertising. It's just a sponsorship that everybody who sits down to eat has one right in front of them.
And it's $25?
It's $25 a square, we do a double, so it would be 50, I believe.
I have a technical question on, yeah, on this flyer, to be perfectly honest.
Which flyer, the Lions?
The Lions Club flyer. Okay, so if you all take a look at the Lions Club flyer.
Yes.
Okay, no, I'm serious. All right, and in the upper left-hand corner, you see a beautiful picture, looks, kind of looks like our logo of Riverside Township.
Absolutely is.
Okay, now you flip to the next page and this is our ad. And you can see our ad and that's our logo that's all over the place on the, on the, on the letterhead here and on the, on the paper. But now let's put them together. This one from the Lions Club looks so clean and crisp, whereas our logo doesn't.
It's a different drawing.
It's a different drawing, yeah.
Well, I mean, can we get the crisp, clean look going because it's just, it's so dark and it's dark, I'm, I'm talking about ours, it's dark and it's, you can't make out the trees and.
I think that's just a bad copy that they're, they're using. We'll see if we can get them something a little clearer. We actually have been going around and around a little bit with the, the, you'll remember that there's an additional plaque to be put up honoring Judy Bartipinka in the auditorium. And the, it's, it's a plaque company that is making it, that's sponsoring it, the family that owns it. And they have asked us for that logo in a particular format that we don't have. It's a, it's, it's some kind of an electronic version that they would use for that. It's like, we don't even know how to get it, you know? You guys are in the graphics business. And so it kind of, they have said, well, we went to your graphics designer and he didn't cooperate. It's like, well, he's not a graphics designer, he has a little bit of computer knowledge, handy. So, you know, he says, I have no idea how that is done. So I, I think that that's the problem. We'll try to give them a crisper version of it because we do use it in different places. Now, yeah, they've obviously taken out a lot of the gray area of it. They've taken out the artists.
Yeah.
Good catch.
Well, so I would like to see, well, on the bottom part there, it says Riverside Town Hall, and I don't know what the date is, it's hard to make out. But I'd like to see that stay, but we use this picture, because it's, you know, you see at the bottom here, maybe it's on the letterhead, it says Riverside Town Hall, I think it says 1870 there.
Yes, that would be the.
So I would like to see that curse of stay, but on this logo. Because this is just, it's just all, you know, I might, like, it's so dark.
I think you can take on the computer.
I think it's just that this is xeroxed and.
But it's the same thing on here, it's just so dark, I mean.
Maybe the color.
Because I said, yeah, I think if, if you have a program on your computer, you can, I'm drawing a blank on what it is, I think you can take it and white it out. There's a way to white out things inside lines.
Like photoshopping it?
That's it, Photoshop.
Well, all I'm saying is, I just, I like the Riverside Lions Club logo here and, I mean, I'd like to see us use that logo instead of that one.
Wouldn't it be confused with their logo if you use that?
Well, I think their logo is more, it's the lines, it's this one up here.
They copied us, that's our logo.
I mean, yeah. All right, I'll, I mean, it is the same picture, they've just removed a lot of the darkness, they've removed the shadow of the building.
I have somebody that knows how to use a Photoshop.
Okay.
It could be, it could be the colors of our.
Okay, I will see if we can, if Andrew can lighten that up and, and give them camera ready that will be a little bit more palpable.
Greg Gorski could do that, there's a million different.
Yeah.
If you have the skills, no big deal. If you don't have the skill.
In the meantime, yeah, in the meantime, do I have the approval for the double ad?
Yes.
Double sides ad.
Do we need a motion for that?
Please.
I make a motion that we buy a double ad for the Riverside Township Lions Club Chicken Dinner Placemat Advertising Form, which is on Sunday, April 15.
I second it.
A motion and a second to take a double ad from the Lions Club Chicken Dinner Placemat Advertising and I will promise to lighten up the logo. And is there any discussion? Not then. It's just a $50. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried, you have to sleep. All right. That will be, we'll call. And we've done all of those and finally, budget, I, again, I've been gathering some more data so that I hope that by the end of this week, I'll let you know if I have some materials in your mailboxes. I hope that by the end of the week I can give you a draft of budget before we actually meet next week. Any other matters? Okay, very none? Oh, yeah, okay, supervisors report, yeah, we've been jumping around so much. Supervisors report, we've been just working on all of the matters that we're talking about here. I've been gathering as much information as possible and I've been having some heart troubles, so my apologies if you haven't been able to reach me out all the time. I don't have anything specific to report that you haven't dealt with here though. Trustees, anybody have anything else to report? Mental health?
Mental health, we'll be meeting next Wednesday, February 21st. We have our final budget meeting tomorrow, I believe via the phone, as it's just going over some of the numbers that we came up with. We have a big agenda on the 21st, that's when we finalize our budget and we have some discretionary grants that we're going to take care of. And special recreation for North Riverside for year 2018. We run into a bit of a logistical issue that should be taken care of by our March meeting and that should be put to bed and put in place. I'll take any questions.
I do have a question. Been looking over the survey and the report that you all put together and talking with my friend on the police force, there was a need identified in the survey for training our first responders in mental health assessment. And the police officers I've spoken to are very much in support of that. They said when they run into people, they don't know what to do with them, they used to be able to just take more of a meal, now they have to take more of a Grange, it's become an issue, it's become a problem. Then the officers down the street would be very interested in obtaining that training. Would that be a grant from the mental health board?
There's, there's training sessions all over, not only the county and state. Several of our board members have taken these training sessions on how to deal with somebody that has a mental illness that is misbehaving at the time. But there's programs all over the county on that, all over. There's no money involved, I mean, if, if there is a fee of some kind, of course they can apply for a discretionary grant, we have no problem with that. But I find it hard to believe that these officers don't know where there's any of these classes when they're all over, all over. I mean, like I said, our board, some of our board members from the mental health board have taken these classes. So what I will do is I will get the information and I will make sure I drop it off with the chief next week after the meeting.
That'd be great.
Very good.
That's very good.
I think, I think what would also help us is identifying the outreach, you know, my whole big thing is reaching out to getting more people involved in our services. I think having a police officers and our first responders able to identify some people in need, because they're the ones out there, they're the ones getting the call. If there's an elderly person who has no family, no friends, the cops are the only ones that go see them. So trying to reach that segment of our constituency is very difficult. So I think it'd be very advantageous for the township to have the police out there really helping with, and the fire department, but having them help us identify people in the.
And I will say that all of the different government units do cooperate on that. We have people from the village, from the various villages refer people to us when they see a need, you know, these people can't, can't pay their water bill, can you talk to them and, and see what you can do? So, I mean, we do, one hand does wash.
And when we, we get, you know, people contacting us, asking, you know, mental health services, if they call Supervisor Wilt, she'll refer them to me, I will refer them to the agencies, our core agencies, and they, so there, there is a pretty good network of that and, like I said, I will absolutely get that information over to Chief Wetzel by next week.
Yeah, that'd be great. You know, they get the calls for someone to wellness check and they know the lights aren't on, you know, they will help be able to come in and, and make those connections. That could be very helpful for us.
Absolutely. Okay, on to our approval of warrants, trustee Drapka.
I move that the board authorize a modified payment of bills identified on the general warrant, February 13, 2018, the amount of $10,021.96.
I'll second it.
I have a motion second to approve the general warrant in the amount of $10,021.96. Madam clerk, would you call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Luthler?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I move that the board verify unauthorized payment of amounts indicated on the following warrants, utility warrant in the amount of $1,842.70, payroll warrant of $19,492.11, health warrant in the amount of $1,675.90, general assistance warrant in the amount of $1,000, township radio players warrant in the amount of $200, food pantry warrant in the amount of $1,712.11.
I'll second, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, no, second?
I have a motion second to approve the following warrants, utility warrant, $1,842.70, the payroll warrant, $19,492.11, the health warrant, $1,675.90, the general assistance warrant in the amount of $1,000, township radio players warrant in the amount of $200, and the food pantry warrant in the amount of $1,712.11. Madam clerk, would you call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Luthler?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Do have one question, but I think it can be answered. Do we know how much?
Do we know how much we're spending on the food pantry for a year?
I will have that information for the budget. You know, it varies because of donations in kind, as well as cash, and, and the need, so I can tell you how much we spent in short.
Wasn't it in that act of the budget?
Well, yes, and you actually would have an update within the materials that follow the warrants, and it'll tell you in the ten months ended January thirty-first, how much was spent there. So if you look through those additional, it will show you how much has been spent on food pantry. Any other matters?
I just remember the next special budget meeting is Thursday, February twenty-second, at six-thirty, right?
Yes.
Just to make that. But otherwise, a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you very much for your input.